David, sorry, can you grab a mat?
I don't know if this is where I should be, but I'm here to report on the veterans memorial.
Sure.
Daniel was going to report to you last meeting. We have had another donation to that monument. First of all, the base is done. Tim Francis laid the whole thing out. It will be set in the spring. But the base is there. The monument is on its way to be carved. But we've had an additional gift that we just wanted to be aware of, of a lighted flagpole. And there's going to be a slate, a piece of slate that sits in beside the monument, a rock piece of slate that John Tacko is giving us. And there's going to be an engraved piece on about service, which he's doing, and that is all paid for by Gwinnett Mallard Co. So those two pieces are added, and we just want your blessing, I guess. I just think that you should know that that was in the works.
Great. So these are like new pieces that will go next to the...
We're going to set the monument first, because that's front and center. And they'll just be... Obviously, there's going to be a flagpole anyway. But the monument will be set, they'll be set in the morning.
Excellent. Thanks. Any additional public comments? Richard?
Yeah, a couple things. You want to put a motion in to have an audit done as a long-term development. But it's actually been done from people's hands. Nobody knows what he's done. Who knows what's going on? You understand about the contract that he did and done. So we need to take a good look at the books and see what he did and didn't do. And then tell him to do a look at that.
Yep, yeah, we're going through now to get organized as a town. I mean, I don't think there's any, there's no, there's no implication of financial impropriety through the Select Board has been overseeing the financials of the town all along. We undergo an annual audit as part of our legal requirements. So I think you should feel rest assured on the, on the money front that things have been handled all along. But yes, this is a period of transition and picking up to see which things went by the wayside and how we should best move forward is absolutely what we're up to right now.
And the other thing I wanted to report is, you know, a lot of people take it as a hard feeling that people come in here and press on some hard issues. Nothing about families, nothing about friends, there's nothing about anything outside the thing. Whatever's going on in here is business. You know, we can't stick up for people because they're good people or they're bad people. It doesn't matter. Feelings aside, it just has to be treated like business.
Yep, no, I'm thrilled that there's so many people here tonight, you know. We often talk about the importance of having the community involved and doing things in a transparent way. And the feedback that the community provides is 100% welcome. You know, I think it's also true that you catch more flies with honey than vinegar, right? And so when we're talking about how best to work with our fellow citizens, taking the right tone, having the right attitude is an important piece of that. We're all here, we're all working towards the same goals. We live together, we spend our spare time together. That's why we live in a place like this as opposed to somewhere else. So thank you for saying that. Feedback is always welcome. I think people should know that. This is, this is a community where we're looking to improve and increase that feedback and communication, not shut it down. Thanks.
I was just thinking what we put the motion that he had put out there. But the speaker that's in the middle floor, was that donated? Or did the town, the office buy it or...
No, so it's actually, technically, I guess it is owned by the town. It was funded from a grant that the entrepreneurship group received, which is basically administered by the town. So it's actually, it's paid for by the main community foundation. Yep. Any other comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed. We will move into select board reports. The... Number of open items here, so we've all been, involved in picking up some pieces and catching up on things the last couple of weeks here. So with regard to the Wi-Fi, the system is working well when it was first installed and then has increasingly been having some trouble. So this, this week I spoke with the, the owner of the company that did the installation and manages, manages it remotely. And they, they were themselves under the impression that the system's working fine. They had sent a technician up to check things, but it's clearly not. So they're coming back up likely next week to really figure out what's going on there. But you should expect that this is going to get fixed here relatively quickly. It had not risen to the top of their, was not their agenda. They didn't know, they didn't know that we were still experiencing problems. So they know now.
Can I just say something on that? On, just so you know, I, I, they had, Daniel had mentioned a couple of times that their bill hadn't been paid because we weren't happy with their service. And I never saw that bill, but I've been going through the emails and they did send kind of a late notice fairly recently. I'm going to say within the last week or two. I didn't respond to it. How would you like me to respond to it? Is that something that we still don't want to pay until this is resolved or...
Yeah, maybe just say, acknowledge that we got it and that we'll sort it out this part of the... Okay, thanks, that's, that's coming up. All right, then the next topic is the fence repair at the transfer station. So this is obviously the fence along the cliff to the quarry that was damaged during the paving this summer. So the Jersey barriers are up. The, the next step there is that there's been a meeting scheduled with CMP for later in November to, or moving a hole so we can get that road away from the edge. So that's where that's at. I guess we should also check with the insurance company and Allstate or whoever we were working with there, just to...
Yeah, did you get the email that I sent to you? I, the insurance company actually called yesterday wondering how we wanted to proceed. And so that kind of prompted me to reach out to Doug Fowler today just to see where that was at. I know he's been in to meet with Daniel a few times, but I don't know what, what they were really talking about or deciding. So I did, I did reach out to him today, but I didn't hear back. So I don't know what, what they're thinking as far as whether they're going to pay for it or submit it to the insurance or what.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, so they at least know that we have any contact.
Yep.
The ADA ramp and gym door. So do you, Marty, do you know who Daniel was working with on those?
There was a, I don't know his name. It's someone who came in. I don't think it is a permanent resident here. He was just somebody who came into the office who happened to be a builder. So, you know, and he did say that he was interested. I don't think he gave any pricing or anything like that, but he did say that he wouldn't be able to get to it to the spring. I'm, as I go back through emails, I might, I don't know if he's emailed this person at all or, or whatever, I might find a contact name somehow that way. But I think it was just kind of a verbal, did I happen to come by?
Yeah. Should, should we go back to the drawing board here?
Sounds like we should.
Yeah. Just, we can post it in the newspaper and...
Okay.
Yeah, because we'd like to get those street bits to, or narrow it down at least to our...
We have designs for the ramp. Do we have, do we have specs for the doorwork?
No, I don't believe so. The engineer came and designed the ramp, but the door, that's just putting a roof over it, right? Over the door so the snow doesn't get on the steps. Yeah, I don't think there would be any design for that.
Maybe we can promote this, sorry.
Yeah, and we were talking about putting a roof over it so that it wasn't built up on the stairs. But that's going to require a bit of support because there's a lot of weight that comes down off that roof. Yeah. Just that, get our access.
Is it, for, for starters, we can, we could at least get the ramp done because that's, that's a spec already made.
I would have to find that, a copy of that. Kind of come across it in my digging so far, but we might, we probably will.
The, it was Plymouth, right?
I think so. That, I could, information I could probably find in email somewhere perhaps. They probably emailed it to one, I'm sure. I've only gotten back about two weeks in the emails, so I'm sure there's much more.
All right, and so you had made a note that the road mirrors had arrived?
Yep.
Were there two of them?
Yep.
Was it one for each street or was it one to each side of the street?
Well, it sounded to me that you guys wanted to put one on holes at the end of each street. There's, there's, right, this isn't there, there's a distance between the two streets. That was my impression, I don't know.
Both pleasant and rural.
Okay, so it's just a question of installing right now?
Yep.
Can we install it?
We can do that.
All right.
Did you talk about the ramp, the TVs?
No.
No.
We've got some mirrors. They're usually concave, you know, rounded concave to kind of give an indication of...
No, but back long. The ramp down the transfer station?
Oh, no, we were talking about the fence and then the ramp up here, yeah.
Do we have any, that, that at all?
No, not yet.
No, no.
Although that will come up later in the agenda. For the, the fire department and EMS services, there's been, previously been concern about the vaccination status of our members and whether we were going to have enough staffing basically once the mandate kicked in. So unfortunately, Tim couldn't join tonight, but I did speak with him earlier in the week. And he said that since this topic first came up, the vaccination rate on the department has increased such that they're not super concerned right now about bandwidth. Obviously, there's always wanting to have more resources on that team, but they're, they're not losing sleep over this right now. The, they expect that as the mandate kicks in further that more people will continue to get vaccinated. And there's already a requirement in place that if you're not vaccinated you need to stay six feet away from those you're serving. And that seems to be working relatively well. If we have additional questions, we can invite them to the future meeting. Sounded like that was something we... And then the next topic here is about moving the artisan cottage for the, for the winter. So I'll coordinate with the group to figure out when, when they want to wrap that up officially. And we can, we can work with Steve and others to find a good spot for that. There is also, well, it's on my mind, from the summer, the, up at the gym, we have that grill off to the side of the, of the gym over there. That was actually donated, I think, from the Legion in Greenville or something like that. So basically, we can use it as a town resource. So we just got to find a spot to stick it.
Yep.
Yep.
Could I add a couple?
Yeah, of course.
This is, just since we kind of emailed all of these items and it's a lot, I just don't want to lose track of some things that we started to talk about and if we have to decide right now, but just, just to keep bringing them up. So the, the bylaws and losing order, just if we can revisit that in the future and get past the stuff that we really want to get done now. And I also don't want to lose track of updating the town website and what's going on, the status on that.
I have an update on that, actually. So we needed to figure out how we can at least post agendas and minutes and things like that. So I did call Amelia today. She's going to come back in tomorrow morning when Jade's here and sort of get us some login. She's going to get us user, user privileges set up so that we can do that. And she did mention the maintenance of the website hasn't really been being done. And she's happy to pick that back up again and, and continue doing that. Or if we wanted to have Jade do that, which I don't know if that's asking too much or not, but... So she'll be back tomorrow. So if there's anything that anybody needs to say to her or that I could relay. I did tell them that I'd see if you were interested in having her pick that back up again. So...
Yeah, I think it's mainly a question of what do we want to use it for? An immediate or right?
Yeah. For me, it's a matter of just posting the agendas and the minutes and making sure that what needs to be on there, to be seen is on there as far as everything else. That can certainly be...
I think in the, in the long term, you know, personally, I, I would like a redesign. If there's some links on there that are, are old and not functioning, I just need to... But I agree right now, that's important.
Yes. So she's, she's happy to do that. So if that's what we want to do, I can let her know that and put her in touch with you guys or whatever as far as what to do. Unless she knows what to do, let her know.
Sandra, were you working with, within all that?
I worked within a little bit, but my privilege is to understand me doing the kinds of things that Marty's talking about. I did have the frozen. I requested not to have them in case I did something. I shouldn't have, so...
But were you working on new content and design work?
Just a little bit of new organization. I'm happy to help with that.
Okay, great. So I, I know that the marketing was also, is a big piece of what the entrepreneurship group was doing. And we had kind of joined forces on the website to do a revamp, both for, for municipal content and for some of the other, you know, cultural economic development stuff as well. And that all kind of got put on hold once we entered the busy summer season. People are starting to come out of that now. I think the intent is to pick up some of these items in, in November. So maybe I'll, if you don't mind, I'll loop you into those conversations as well. We can kind of pull...
That would be a great site to have all the Bus Centennial information on as well as the festival stuff.
So I guess as far as Amelia's concerned, let's get Jade up to speed on what we can for now. And then we can bring in Amelia to those conversations as well and figure out what she's going to do.
Okay. Like maybe at the next meeting or something?
Yeah, I guess, I think if the group of people that are involved in that could probably just meet on their own and then report back.
Okay.
I had a few, yeah, issues too there that some of that aren't important, but I think we need to just follow through. Some seasonal items, like the use of the town water, whether or not that's something that, whether it's liability that we can't use it or if we have some other options. I just want to have it put on the list so that we don't forget it. Additionally, too, John had a meeting with Daniel there a month back. So apparently, he didn't get the answers. There was no real conversation around the budget and understanding the cycle and the monies that were in that period, so... Is that right, John?
There was no, no explanation.
No. That's all, I just, you know, it should satisfy any citizen. Should be able to come in and talk and ask and give an explanation. So when we can do that, whether it suits somebody else that's in that position that can understand that better than myself or others. We're going to talk about the road commission, road group. I would like to have a, a review of the sign ordinance. Talked about that in the past. It's only because it's, it's a vague item because of knowing whether or not there's actually a property line up here or not. And it's pretty hard to determine on ordinance. There's really nothing to go by as far as a standard as far as location. So I'd like to see if that ordinance could be reviewed just to make it understandable, fair, you know.
Is it sign ordinance or language and a land use ordinance?
No, it's actually a sign ordinance, yeah. Talks about a property line and talks about a neighborhood setback. This particular instance talks about the highway property line. What it is, it's an easement actually of land that they purchased back in 1952, that there are monuments, but there is no location where those monuments are. Yeah, I think it's hard to have an ordinance without actually knowing what the property line is. The only thing the state's really worried about though is visibility. And so that if a car is going by or a car is pulling out of the driveway or something like that, they want to make sure that people can see up and down the road. We also need to decide whether we're going to do anything with the well manic section of the road that, well, the Monson build section. As to whether or not that was even in the road work that was planned last summer, past summer.
You're talking about the stretch at the end?
Yeah, yeah. Whether that was even in the scope of work. Because that may not be, but it's just something that is occurring, is erosion that's occurring. I too brought up in my mind mostly the, the rules of order. I want to make sure that we have the rules of order for these meetings. And for both ourselves as well as the public, you know. I agree with Sue there. Let's see, beaten also the speed bump, which I think could be delayed until next spring for the North Hilton Road because of following, you know, being a town. We're just going to rip it out of the place. And that was brought up by Kim, Works at Robinson's there.
The state road guide comes. I was wondering, I don't know if it's under his authority to look at what we... I think you had an email to him that with the quick speed on that North Hilton Road and how you can slow folks down. And I didn't know if he could suggest signage, other signage, like, you know, flashing, slow down.
If you're listening.
Yeah. Something could happen, man, for sure.
Yeah.
What, what I had previously thought, and I don't know if it's a possibility, is as you're coming down the hill, you know, into town, North Hilton, right before you get to a little banded road that, you know, it's hard to remember to slow down, a lot of folks, right?
Something.
It's 25. So I was wondering if it's a possibility of getting like a solar powered flashing light that just says 25 ahead, you know, slow down, gets your attention.
Yeah, or...
Something.
Or no. All people live there, I mean.
Yeah. I would think so.
Yep. Off the end of Forest Avenue 2, there's that section that I think the ground, that a soap out truck uses to turn around in the wintertime. No problem in the wintertime because it's frozen. It's usually in the spring of the year when stuff gets soft there. I don't know if it'd be better to dig that thing out. You know, dig out foot of worth or whatever it is that's in that place because all it does is get mucky in the spring and then actually put in gravel. But, you know, Rose is asked about it because almost everybody gets in there, gets stuck.
It kind of like comes right off her driveway.
Yes.
That's how that is, how that comes together right there. When he turns, the way the need may, there's some long gravel there. You know, dig that right out. Let me do that. Use that right there.
Do you know where I'm talking about, folks?
Yeah.
That's off the end of Forest Avenue, that very same street. We had some of the vehicles that were parked in the end of the road there. But the soap out has been going down that road and that hasn't been bothering to turn around. It's actually been backing up all the way. And years before, when Eric was plowing, he'd turn around in the turnaround point, back up. A few times he'd get stuck in there.
We had fixed that though, when I come over at 5:00.
The turn, the upper turnaround is fine.
No, okay.
It's that path that they back into that goes down into the trailer and stuff like that was first off in the end of the road there.
I don't think he goes much more than just off that path.
Okay.
And turns. We can, Lynn Bryant looked at it. We'll go back down. Maybe dig it out if that's the answer. We had Doug sound, we put, we put a gravel there.
Yeah.
We didn't put a tarp, we used a tarp. We put only a gravel, I don't know.
You did put that?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. It's just a hard right there because her ditch is, there's no place for cowl right there. Like this kind of...
No, there is no, there is no ditch on that upper side.
There is. But we can, only the gravel is better.
I think it would seem to me too that it'd be better for him to, you know, if he has the backing out of that road, the place to have a turnaround so he can just fall out again.
Yep.
Anyway.
Yep. Move up at the store.
We're going to talk about 2002, 25 road work. Yeah, and the only thing I have was, we are going to take a look at books as far as the taxes go and stuff like that, right? As far as the... All of them, okay, on the books.
Yeah, so actually, as part of the transition, we need to go through this whole process anyway.
Yeah.
Everything needs to get signed off and then transferred and re-signed. So basically, just somebody's got to pay the money to...
Yeah.
I sent that form to the auditor today. I, I called, he's it now because the attorney mentioned the auditor. So, so he's got it now and hopefully he'll be back in touch with me to sort of help me figure all that out. Because I wouldn't even really know where to find a lot of that stuff and everything. So hopefully I'll hear from him tomorrow. But he's got it anyways and it's in the works.
When the attorney sent those files, I was like, oh, boy.
I know. That's what I said too. So anyway, it'll, it'll get done though. And he was familiar with them. He says, I've seen them before, I know it's standard practice. And I says, you just need to show me where I can get this information. I said, I'm sure it's a trio somewhere, but I don't know. But we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
All set.
All right, Sue, anything else?
I don't know. There was one, but it's, it's gone in my mind now this time.
Y'all sticky.
Yes.
All right, town committee reports. So we have the committee reports and then we've got a couple of open items, right? We need to sort out as well. So festival duty. So that would be Bobby, but we're, we were going to bring up some new members, right?
We're, I have a proposal. I'm not sure if we're ready for it yet. Right now, okay.
So just, just to clarify, we do have an existing charge for a festival committee. So we wouldn't need to make anything new. And they do, they do cover Snow Roller and Summer Fest, yeah. It'd just be a matter of new members.
I got a letter from Dee and Bobby that pretty much was saying that they wanted to basically pass on the Snow Roller and Vice and Centennial Committee. So like, that's the way to talk about it.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Such that we were...
I, I've got the same thing, I can't remember if she called or not.
So if I can share, we just had a quick meeting, Sandra and Delana the other day. And, and in the process of recruiting the chairperson for the festival.
I think we have it.
Okay.
I didn't want to, you know... I approached Jonathan Pullman when I was told that the rec committee was no longer handling Snow Roller Day. And he just moved into town. He's 40 plus, you know, he's got kids, it's wonderful, we have young people, yay. So I went to see him up at the quarry and asked him if he could have the games for the Snow Roller. And he said, oh, he'd love to, so he'll be chairman. You know you don't say yes in this town.
That was a sneaky way to do it.
No, but I think he'll be wonderful. And he was very excited about it. And he's an educator, he knows how to handle kids, which is wonderful.
So Sue, did you send up the heavy hammer to do that or what?
No, just kind of all fell together. No, it just kind of all fell together.
It all fell together because we were told, Sandra and I were told out of the blue that we had to run the snow roller day and something else. And we said, no, that's not true.
That's happens, you get invited to play Candy Land during Snow Roller Day and then all of a sudden you're the chairperson of the committee.
And you have the right age, Tyler.
Yeah. I, I felt for your trap twice.
I was going to say, there's some history there. You're really on, on some...
Just greeting your messages, okay?
Okay, so I guess we just, we would need, uh, one of these.
Oh.
Oh, for him.
Okay.
And anybody else who wants to join?
So this is going to be for the festival committee?
Yeah.
Okay. Chairperson, are we going to call on that?
This is the, this is just, no, this is just for Snow Roller.
Oh, okay, well then that's, then we don't need that because... So is, I guess the question though is just, Snow Roller is or is not falling, falling under bicentennial committee this year specifically?
It's not because when the bicentennial committee started meeting, we were told, or we assumed that was probably at fault, that Snow Roller will take care of itself because it always does, there's a committee for it. That Festival Days would take care of itself because it's a committee for it. And Chris Pringle would take care of itself because it's a committee for it. Of course, Pringle will. But apparently the other two, it's questionable now because the rec committee's not doing it anymore.
Right, yeah, so Chris Pringle is Annalise, she's doing her thing.
She's good.
Yeah, and then Festi, uh, Festival is Snow Roller and Summer Fest. So if, um, then I guess, let's just...
I think the pieces will be here for Snow Roller, Tyler, right now because John's on board. John Lawton does his thing, yeah, Hubler does his thing. You know, I think probably that will pull together, so Festival Days is hanging right now.
Yeah, yeah, and that, that's fine. I just want to make sure that we still, that we're on the same page. We still have a gap that we need to sort out.
There is a gap.
For Snow Roller more broadly.
Right.
Is bicentennial, is the, is the January, Snow Roller is January or February? Is the February bicentennial event on Snow Roller Day?
It is Snow Roller Day.
So then what's the gap? Are you suing parallel?
Snow Roller.
You're suing parallel activities?
Right.
Got it, okay. All right. Bicentennial committee.
One of the reasons, Sandra's got a lot to say, I'm sure. One of the reasons we asked Sue to, to meet with us is because Daniel has been the liaison to the bicentennial committee. He, I'm going to challenge him on this one. He's been wonderful. And he knew what was going on with, with everything we wanted to do, but he's now gone. So we approached Sue to see if she'd be the liaison from you guys. Just, just sit on the bicentennial committee so she can report back to you. Would she agree to do it?
Perfect, yeah.
And seeing with them, there's been a lot going on.
The furniture's coming together. That's being designed and drafted now. So that should be available for Chris Pringle latest, if all goes well. Merchandise is coming along. So we, we hope to have some of that for Chris Pringle as well.
Coins are in the forge right now?
Coins are on the wall. We're not sure that the coin is going to be worth doing. It's not scratched, but it's on hold.
Gotcha.
And that's...
What is that?
We just don't think it's going to be working there. We couldn't find anybody to design it.
No.
It's going round and round.
Okay.
And it's pretty expensive. And for those of us who have it from 50 years ago, what do you do with them?
I still have mine in the plastic wrapper.
I know, I know. So we just thought maybe that was one thing we didn't, the, the actual design...